Page two to thirteen.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna get going here. Populous, check in, sure, we're all set.
I guess we're set.
We're all set. Good evening, welcome to the July tenth zoning board of adjustment meeting. To my left is Carter Fark, who is a deputy planning manager for the city of Nashua. Across the way, we have Mr. Robert Shaw, Mr. Steve Lionel, and I am J.P. Boucher. We may have one or two more people come, but I'll explain to you our rules when it comes to that, but we'll discuss that when come.
Do you want one of us to act as acting clerk?
Yes, that would be great.
Yeah. Is the picture up here?
Yeah.
This meeting is recorded by written transcript, audio, and video recording. Please direct all testimony into the microphone, and only one person speak at a time, please. If you don't have our, you don't have a copy of tonight's agenda, feel free to get one, it's right over here on the side table. Tonight, we'll be hearing requests for deviations from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. I'll explain a special exception. It's a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. The five criteria required for this board to grant a request for a special exception are: one, that the requested use must be listed in Table of Uses, Table of Use Regulations as a special exception; two, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety; three, the requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system such that other areas of the city will be subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare; four, any special regulation for use set forth in another section of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled; and five, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the, of the district adjoining zones nor be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of Nashua. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for approval of a variance are: the variance will not be contrary to public interests, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, substantial justice is done, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished, and literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the city of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. Also, this board will hear all scheduled cases as long as a quorum of three voting members are present at this meeting. So that's part of our bylaws and part of the ordinance of the city of Nashua. So a minimum of three voting members which are present tonight. If another voting member comes in, they will, at the beginning of a case, they'll be able to sit in and vote on that case. Other than that, we'll be the ones voting on your cases tonight. And unless there is one of us that accuses herself, we'll deal with that when we get Any citizen has a right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have a right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fark and the city Nashville Planning Department within thirty calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Fark for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part is what we call a public hearing. This is where the applicant and citizens address this board and speak to the merits of the case. The order of testimony is as follows. The applicant will have fifteen minutes to present their case. Those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to testify. Those in opposition or with questions will also have a limit of five minutes each to testify. The applicant then has five minutes to speak in rebuttal. And finally, a representative, and only one person of those in oppositions or with questions, will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. Please direct all testimony to this board and not to the audience. If you have any questions about an application, they are to be directed to the board, and we'll get them answered. Second part of the public meeting is where the board debates the merits of the case amongst ourselves. Please note that during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. If you need to have a conversation, feel free to step out in the hall. The acoustics are really good in this room, so we can hear everything that you say from here. Mr. Fark, are there any changes in tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
Does anybody have any questions before we get going? Okay, seeing none, we'll start off. I'll open the public hearing for case number one, which is owner Riviere University, 436 South Main Street. Description as follows: Riviere University owner, 436 South Main Street, Sheet One, Lot One, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-112 to work within a twenty-foot other wetland buffer to expand an existing man-made detention basin to address stormwater management as part of athletics upgrades for Riviere University. It's in the R9 zoning district. Is anybody here to present a case? Come on up. Please give us your name and address, please.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm here to represent Riviere University. My name's Gary Flaherty, 50 Farmwood Drive, City of Nashua. And give me a second to tack something up here, please.
If I might go ahead and introduce myself also. Tim Manis with Durkinettes and Associates. We are a consulting firm working with Riviere University on the athletics projects, here to help with any questions that need to be answered.
And I'm John Parker with Riviere University Chief Financial Officer.
All right. Behind the existing health center...
You need to speak into the mic, sir.
Oh, sure, okay.
You can pull it out if you like.
I thought it was close enough.
No, you can pull it out if you like, and that's easier. That'd be great, just that, we need that for the record.
No problem. All right. Behind the fitness center, which is existing, there's a basin right here that collects stormwater, all right? It's approximately seven thousand square feet. And what they're going to do, meaning the university, is up in this area here, they want to do some expansion of, you know, the sports facilities. So that's going to require some existing drainage characteristics for stormwater. So this green area right here is the proposed expansion of that existing basin. We're looking to put in about three thousand square feet. So what we need with the special exception is relief in this interface right here, about six hundred square feet of that twenty, square, you know, that twenty-foot buffer. We're not going to go into the wetland area, you know, it's just going to stay the same level as the existing basin, and it's going to create more buffer. And other than that, it's a pretty straightforward project, so I'll entertain any questions that you folks have.
Any questions for the applicant? We have a letter here, a recommendation of the Conservation Commission, and you've also gotten this, and there were three items listed here about removing invasive species, and then the cross-country course to be around the east side of the basin, and then trash around the basin be removed monthly. You'll comply with those?
Yes, the university will comply with those.
Okay. Question?
Mr. Chairman, the other thing would be the special conditions.
Right. Are you familiar with special conditions for a wetland buffer?
Yes.
Okay, so there are nine special conditions. Are you testifying? I'm not going to go through all of them, but are you testifying that you will comply with these?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. And Mr. Fark indicates that they are well aware and they're all set. Any other questions, or you need a few minutes? Okay, we're all set.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Your application was very thorough, by the way, so that's probably why we don't have too many questions. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the application?
Pardon?
I'm, I'm, sorry, sorry. Anybody else in favor of the application like to speak? Seeing none, is there anybody with any concerns or opposition to the application? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Again, the application was very thorough. It's very clear what they're going to do. And obviously, I take merit in the conservation letter here, so it's very specific on what they want them to do, especially where to locate the course. I think that, again, we've seen some of this before, and I'm confident that, that they're going to comply as they testify. I don't see any detriment to this, this plan. I think it's been well done, and it's been engineered, obviously.
Staff has had several meetings with the applicant, and we're well aware of what they're doing, and it meets all of our criteria.
I'm satisfied.
Mr. Lionel?
I'm also satisfied.
All right. I'll make a motion. If no one wants to leave. I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Riviere University, 436 South Main Street. Riviere University owner, 436 South Main Street, Sheet One, Lot One, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-112 to work within a twenty-foot other wetlands buffer to expand an existing man-made detention basin to address stormwater management as part of the athletics upgrade for university, for the Riviere University. It's in the R9 zoning district. We find that it is listed in the Table of Uses. It will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. It will not overload public water drainage or sewer or other municipal systems. Special regulations are, are fulfilled as, the special regulations are the wetland special conditions, which the applicant did verify that they will fulfill. It will not impair the integrity beyond a character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of the residents. There is a letter dated July 5th, 2018, from the Conservation Commission, giving it favorable recommendation with three specific items to be followed, stipulations to be followed. The applicant has attested that they will follow those stipulations also. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Riviere University.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's three to nothing. So you have motion passes. The motion passes. Again, just a fair warning, likely not, but there's also that thirty-day window of appeal. Good luck, thank you very much for coming. With that, I'll, I'll close the case, I'll close the public meeting for case number one, and open the public hearing for case number two. Case number two is David Hovey, Three Horse Pond Avenue. David Hovey owner, Three Horse Pond Avenue, Sheet One, Lot 351, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264 to exceed maximum accessory use area, forty percent permitted, forty-four percent existing, seventy percent requested, to construct a twenty-one by twenty-three addition and back in an existing detached garage. It's in the R9 zoning district. Welcome, give your name and address, please.
Hello, my name's David Hovey. I live at Three Horse Pond Ave., Nashua, New Hampshire. I want to put an addition on to an existing garage. It's detached. It's twenty-one by twenty-three. I have the two bays up front, which I want to put my personal cars in. I have a Ford Model T, nineteen twenty-seven. I have a convertible. I have five registered cars in my name. I want to take the Ford Model T and put it in the back, because I don't really drive it very much, I just bring it to car shows and stuff like that. And I want to use the front garage for my personal vehicles. I have a Jeep Wrangler that I take the hardtop off and take things apart as far as the doors and the hardtop, so I have a place to put that. So it's all for dry storage.
Any questions for the applicant? We'll note that you, you have a pretty deep lot.
It is pretty big.
Right. And Mr. Fark, the reason why we're looking at this, right, is...
Well, with the, the overall size of the house is eighteen hundred and sixty square feet, so everybody's allowed forty percent of that size for accessory dwell, accessory structures. And with the size of the existing garage at eight hundred and twelve, plus the new garage, it would be like twelve hundred and ninety-five square feet, so that, that gives you the seventy percent of the home size.
Okay.
It's all woods behind me. I have the fishing game club behind me.
Any other questions for the applicant?
How does, how will you get in and out of this new part of the garage? Is it through the main garage, or do you have doors around the back?
No, it's going to be a door on, on the back, so I'm going to drive around my existing garage and park in, there'll be one door.
Some sort of gravel path or whatever to, or, or you just drive over the grass?
I'm driving over the dirt. My plan was to put some recycled asphalt down just for something to drive over.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is anybody else here to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody with questions or oppositions to this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Again, it's one of those things where looking at square footage of houses, and I think that this applicant has a decent-sized piece of property. So again, you know, we're following the dimensional criteria for, for additions, but again, you know, I'm looking at the piece of property, the, the size of the piece of property. The addition, I don't think anybody's really going to, going to see this addition. It's going to be in the back of an existing garage. So I, I, I'm in favor of the application. I don't see it having any issues or detriment to any of the neighbors or anything here. Again, I think it's a relatively good-sized piece of property for this size addition. Yes, Mr. Shaw? I'm sorry.
Yeah, a couple other comments are, this is one of those where if it was an attached garage, it wouldn't even be here. And in the case of a home of this size but on a fairly large lot, this is where it doesn't end up, this kind of additional accessory use does not end up being kind of out of balance with the property. So this is a classic case of, because of the larger lot size, it still is, is, I think, quite a reasonable usage versus if this lot were perhaps half the size or something like that.
Mr. Lionel?
I have nothing more to add, is...
Okay.
No issues.
All right, does anybody want to make a motion? Would you like...
I'll make a motion.
All right, great, thank you.
I'll make a motion on behalf of the owner, David Hovey. Address is Three Horse Pond Avenue, Sheet E, Lot 351. Requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264 to exceed maximum accessory use area, forty percent permitted, forty-four percent existing, seventy percent requested, to construct a twenty-one foot by twenty-three foot addition in the back of an existing detached garage. This is in the R9 district. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. Given the special conditions of the property, it's a very large lot with a relatively small house, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other reasonable method. We believe that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We don't find that it will adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It's, we don't believe it's contrary to the public interest. We have no, no evidence of that, and we believe substantial justice would be served. So I move to approve this variance.
Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's three to nothing. The motion carries. So thank you very much for coming. Again, thirty-day window of appeal, so you're aware. All right, so good luck, thank you very much. So with that, I'll close the public here, the public meeting for case number two and open the public hearing for case number three. Mr. Shaw, do you need a few minutes?
Just a minute or two, please.
Shaw. Again, I'd like to open the case, the public hearing for case number three, for Lewis Tremblay, owner, 371 Main Street, Sheet 108, Lot 102, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for lot density to reduce existing twenty-three-thousand three-hundred-seventy-two square foot lot with a five-unit multifamily building to a fifteen-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-two square foot, square foot lot with four multifamily units, thereby reducing the existing density of four-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-four square feet per dwelling unit to three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight square feet per dwelling unit, where seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty square feet per dwelling unit is required. It's in the RA zone. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Richard Mayne, professional engineer with Mayne and Parkett of Nashua. Before we get into my presentation, because the local ordinance requires me to go forward with three board members, I'm going forward. However, I reserve the right, per the state IRS says, to be heard by a full five-member board in case this doesn't go my way, so, for that to the record.
I've been told that there is no such right.
There definitely is.
We'll worry about that a later time, but thank you. It's always a topic discussion.
Yes, I just say, when we did the, the training up in Concord, I had two lawyers telling me that there was no such right.
Yeah, so, but, thank you, thank you.
Other places will give you the option of going forward or not with less than a full board.
Right.
Nashua, they require you to go forward, so I'm going forward.
Right.
Normally, I would not go forwards, which is allowed also, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayne.
Anyway. For the record, my name is Richard Mayne, professional engineer with Mayne and Parkett of Nashua, representing Lewis Tremblay, the property owner and applicant with regards to the property at 371 Main Street at the corner of Fowler Ave. The property is also known as Sheet 108, Lot 102, in the RA zone, containing twenty-three-thousand three-hundred-seventy-two square feet. The building on the lot is a five-unit apartment building built in 1910. As noted on the assessor's records, the units are very small and limited, with thirteen rooms and four bedrooms total, of which four are bedrooms, total comprising for the five apartment units, so the units are, are two rooms per, per apartment. The building and property is a longstanding legal non-conforming lot. Before the board, involved subdividing off a legal conforming lot in the front on Main Street for a single-family house. The multifamily building would be reduced from five units to four units, making it less non-conforming as to the number of units. The building would still be non-conforming as to density. The density would go from forty-six seventy-four square feet per unit to thirty-nine sixty-eight per unit, thus requiring a density variance in my presence here. Overall, including the proposed front lot, the density for the two properties together would not change. This neighborhood along Main Street is predominantly a mixture of offices and multifamily residential buildings on small undersized lots. Majority of the properties are legal non-conforming lots of record that do not meet the density requirements of the current ordinance. The proposal to reduce the existing building from five to four units would make the building less non-conforming as to the number of units and more in character with the neighborhood. This would be, and this would be in the public interest. The spirit of the ordinance would be followed by reducing the existing building from five to four units. The overall density of the two lots would not change. Substantial justice would be accomplished by allowing the property becoming more, become more in character with the neighborhood. It would also allow the interior of the apartment building to be renovated so that some of the apartment units could be reconfigured. This is a building constructed in 1910, and some of the interior needs to be, excuse me, renovated and upgraded. Property values would be enhanced with the construction of a new single-family home and the renovation of the multifamily building. Construction of a single-family house along the Main Street frontage for this uniquely-shaped and developed property would be a very reasonable use of the property. In this particular case, and, and its legal non-conforming status, the reduction of the building from five units to four units brings the property into more conformity with the neighborhood. The zoning ordinance, that's an a concern, creates a hardship in bringing this property to a more, to more conformity with the neighborhood, neighborhood. The zoning ordinance creates a hardship when we try to bring the property to more conformity with the neighborhood, going from five to four units. The, the public or private rights of others would not be injured with granting of this variance. The property, the proposal will bring the overall property to be more in character with the neighborhood, and we thank you for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Mayne? Mr. Shaw?
So I appreciate the fact that you're trying to point out, you're making it less non-conforming with the reduction by one, one unit, but when, when I really look at it, when I take the overall property...
Stays the same density overall.
Stays, well, yes, it stays five units overall.
Yeah.
So that's, I guess that's one thing, but the, the thing that I'm seeing is, you're now, though, creating two separate structures, so you have this, this conforming single-family lot, but by going to this much smaller other lot that now has the multifamily unit on it, I appreciate the fact that it's going, now there'll only be four units there, but the density of those units is about, about one-half of what's allowed, so you really could only by right have two units when it requires seventy-two sixty per dwelling, and you've got a little, approaching sixteen thousand square feet. So to me, a more reasonable use would be to take this down to two or three units for the multifamily.
Well, I hear what you're saying, but we are a legal non-conforming use on this entire property today at five units. The fact that we want to construct a single-family in the front doesn't change the overall density of the, of the particular property. Another way of, that I could have approached this particular thing is to, to ask for multiple buildings on the lot, one house and one multifamily, and still only have a total of five units, and the density would not have changed, and it still would have been in character. But it's very much preferable that the single-family have its own lot, even though two, two units on a lot has been granted many times by this board and, and other cases, and with, with the density question would not, would not come up. So the point being is, is it better to have two structures on one lot or a conforming house and, and bring the multifamily, even though it's still non-conforming, and, into a smaller number of units, which is, to me, the principal thing in this neighborhood? Because every one of these lots in this neighborhood that has multifamily on it does not conform to the density of today's ordinance. So to require this property to, to conform to today's ordinance when there are maybe a dozen properties in this neighborhood that have multifamilies that don't meet the density ordinance would, would not be reasonable and would not be fair, and...
I, I still tend to differ, because part of what we're supposed to do is look at bringing things into greater conformance. And so I'm seeing some part of that, and I'm seeing the other part.
And I hear you.
You're also, you're looking to do something from grandfather non-conforming use. The other properties are there. If they would come and want to start doing similar things, they might have to also deal with a certain amount of what's going to be allowed to remain non-conforming or not. with a certain amount of what's going to be allowed to remain non-conforming or not.
I understand, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Shaw, it's just, in my opinion, this is my personal opinion, that have a lower number of units in a building is more, brings it more in conformity with the, and the character of the neighborhood than the density question. The overall density that we end up with here, just for the multifamily building on it, is equal or better than many of the properties already in this particular neighborhood. So, character of the neighborhood is a clear hardship argument. We should be able to use our property in similar nature a, a, as our surrounding things, and that goes to density, that goes to number of units, so, uh, we will meet or exceed the density of several other properties in this neighborhood, and therefore we meet the character of the neighborhood. That in itself is a hardship. The fact that we're going from five to four, again, uh, brings us in less non-conformity with the, with this neighborhood, uh, you know, there are several three families, there are several, uh, six and ten family buildings in this neighborhood. It's loaded with non, uh, with, with, uh, non-residential structures, there's office buildings, a funeral parlor, a few other items in this, so, uh, your strict interpretation, though, is not incorrect, but I don't think that's the, the hardship argument that's set forth by the courts and everything else in this particular case, because, uh, we're not changing the, the total density of the property, that, we're not changing the density of this part of the neighborhood.
My strict interpretation would be to say, it's, we don't approve anything other than you get to divide the lot up, do the single-family home, and do a two-unit...
I understand.
There. So, I'm not, I'm not, I didn't say that, I said...
I know you didn't.
That's what's allowed, so I want to be clear that I'm not saying...
I heard you, I heard you.
...of strict interpretation.
Yeah.
But, uh... I guess the other thing I wanted to just ask about, 'cause it's not clear to me from the, the plan, so it appears that the driveway that's currently serving the multifamily unit is going to be removed because of the removal of that easement. Is that correct?
Yes, the, the driveways, uh, this, you're talking about this easement here, we're going to get rid of that easement, and the driveways are going to come off of Fowl Ave, which...
Okay. That's what I would have expected, I just wasn't...
Which is a benefit, but I don't think it's really necessary for the zoning board. That, when we go for the planning board, if we get to go there, uh, that'll be what's represented to the planning board, and that'll be, that'll improve getting another driveway off of Main Street in this particular area, especially when it has two lanes and things like that, so.
I would just say, to me, it bolsters your case, so...
Okay.
Anything that, if you're going to take a, a active driveway off of Main Street and put it on a side street?
For sure, we're going to do that.
Me, that's, yes, I agree, it's more of a planning board ultimate issue, but from a, you know, serving the public interest and those kind of things, just...
If needed, that could be a stipulation of this particular case. Whatever you decide. We're going to do that, one way or another.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure, 'cause it, it wasn't clear from the plan, if that was, I assumed it was, but...
I don't know exactly where it's going to go right now, except I know it's coming off Fowl Ave. The one for the corner lot will come near the back of the lot to keep it as far away from the intersection. The other one can go anywhere. Around here, there's a lot of options in that one, so that part hasn't been figured out yet.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Maynard? Okay, thank you.
All set, Mr.?
Is anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, seeing none, anybody with questions or opposition to this application? Come on up. You name an address, please.
My name is Attorney Joseph Anuto. I'm the owner of the building at 369 Main Street, directly next door. We are separated, the two lots, by Fowl Ave, and it's a very congested neighborhood as it is now. It's an older neighborhood. Many of the homes there are, are single-family. I hear Mr. Maynard, who I consider a friend, and I've hired him and used him in the past myself, uh, but I would have to disagree with him that there are many multiple-unit buildings there, 'cause I heard him say that there were six and ten units. There are none there that I know of. The building next door to me is a two-unit. Uh, many of the other homes in the neighborhood are single-family homes. That Fowl Ave is a pretty active thoroughfare to the neighborhoods in the back, and so that street gets a lot of traffic. My other concern, and why this isn't in the public interest, is, uh, many of these homes have, uh, single-lane driveways. There is a single, uh, garage, or single-car garage in the back, and it has one lane. And here we are, 2018, many of those families own multiple cars. And so to jockey cars in and out in a single-lane driveway, many of them end up on the street. So, Fowl Ave, if you travel there pretty much any time of the day, there will be two, three, four, six cars on that, uh, street. I am here at the corner of Main Street in Fowl Ave, my driveway empties out into Fowl Ave. The two driveways that are proposed are directly across from mine. Now, here we are the summer, but yet, when we talk about the winter, there is literally no place to put the snow on that street. As it is right now, I have to have my plow guy plow it out into the street from my driveway and then plow it into my front lawn. To add two more driveways is going to be horrendous. To add another house there is going to be horrendous, as far as the traffic and the congestion and the density. And I understand the argument, gee, it's a five-unit now, we're reducing the existing building to four-unit, but we're still adding one up here, which changes the effect and the density. So this, to me, is a little bit of a ruse that, that, this building structure doesn't change in any of its shape or form, it will still be the same square footage, we're just putting four units in. That doesn't really change the, the problem. Yes, I understand that the driveway here is on Main Street, but you've created a problem by adding two over here, not just one, one for the main house, but one for the single-family home. And so, again, you have to assume that the single-family home is going to have multiple vehicles. So now we're having additional cars on this street. So, I don't think it's going to increase the, the value of the neighborhood. It's not going to add to the, the, uh, the benefits of the neighborhood. Actually, it's creating a lot of problems, and so, yes, I would oppose it and would ask that it be denied.
Okay, any questions? Just a quick question, just to get where you're coming from, or your, your feeling. I, I hear what you're saying about the density. Just from the traffic point of view, if, if there was a driveway that was, and I'm not saying that this is what it is, but I'm just seeing where you're coming from, if there was, the driveway stayed where it was off of Main Street to access those two properties, would that make, would you believe that would make things better on Fowl Ave?
It would make it more palatable, but I don't know that that solves the problem. This is a very narrow lot. It's, it's narrow and long, and so, I'm sure you're familiar with it, it's right on Main Street. Uh, to add a single-family home here with an easement and driveway to the back still pushes the home to the front. I, I don't think that it's, that is then becomes in the character of the neighborhood. A lot of those homes still, still have a fair amount of buffer between them and the streets, and so now you're just pushing it to the, to Fowl Ave, and I don't think that solves the issue either.
Right, I'm just trying to figure out what, you know, what your thought was on...
Sure, I understand.
...on traffic. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much for coming. Anybody else with, uh, questions or concerns? Seeing none, Mr. Maynard, you have five minutes to rebuttal.
Mr. Anuto got his law firm over there with the help of myself from this zoning board. He's a non-conforming user by variance. He has, in any one time or not, converted that house, he now has, uh, employees, and he has, at any time, sixty-eight cars in his driveway and parked on the street, all his clients and things like that, so. For him to make this claim that Fowl Ave is, is going to get traffic congested is, is ludicrous. The, uh, the traffic situation, as you well know, taking that driveway off Main Street and put, put it on Fowl Ave, i- is a much safer situation. It, it allows safe left turns in and out of the property and, and onto Main Street. So, and we're talking about five units, uh, he could put a driveway there as it is anyway, e- even if you get folks denied the, the total variance, uh, that's his right to do that, and he, he likely would do that, so, because it's a better access than coming out on a Main Street. I guess, he says it's a congested neighborhood, uh, I would suggest it's only a neighborhood of undersized lots by, by zoning, uh, very much so, et cetera. In the packet, my application packet, there's a drawing, a GAS drawing, and in the circles is, are the numbers of, uh, units in the various buildings. At 360 Main Street, it's ten units. Directly, at 368, there's three units. Uh, there's the funeral home, then there's an office, uh, and, and behind the, uh, office at 365, there are three units in there. Uh, down at 377, there are three units, so there are numerous multifamily properties on Main Street, which is this neighborhood.
It's this drawing here, it's, it's not in color, but it has, it has the...
The numbers are in circles.
The written numbers, and there, there, it's the number of units in each of the properties.
Yeah. So...
Do you see that? It was a, it's in your, uh, in your packet, Mr. Shaw, the third page in? So let me sure Mr. Shaw finds it.
All set? So...
Okay, so that's...
As regard, this is suppo, the Main Street is supposedly an RA neighborhood. It, it's far from it. Uh, there are very few residential things on Main Street. This is a mixed-use neighborhood, funeral parlors, office buildings, multifamilies, et cetera. So the character of this neighborhood is not single-family residential, the character of this neighborhood is a mixed-use with several multifamily buildings on undersized lots with, with very low number of density, meaning, uh, not anywhere near, uh, what the ordinance requires, uh, which would be on the order of 7,000, uh, square feet per unit. Most of these are, are well under half of that, uh, and, and very much similar to what the four-unit building would have if this project gets approved. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Maynard? Mr. Anuto, you're all set? Okay, thank you, Mr. Maynard. Attorney Anuto, you have five minutes in rebuttal.
I, I would respond briefly. I just heard that now we're talking about one, or two, and three density homes, but some of those are not in the same neighborhood, they are further down the street, which to me is a different neighborhood. It still doesn't change the congestion and the density on Fowl, uh, Fowl Ave, which is what we're talking about. We're adding two driveways on that street. We're adding a new structure, we're adding a new family, we're now adding multiple cars. Yes, I do have a, a law office, my driveway does come out to Fowl Ave, I have clients that prefer to park in the street as opposed to in my parking lot. So yes, do we do contribute to that, but those driveways are going to be right in front of mine. In addition, the distance, the rest of this street is single-family homes, and so it does change the character of the neighborhood because we're now adding a second building, adding more density. Thank you.
Uh, any questions for Attorney Anuto? Okay, thank you very much for coming. All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. So, I, I'm listening, you know, I hear what, um, what the butler is saying about density, and I looked at that, and I was trying to really wrap my head around that. So, um, right now, with the proposed lot, that, the, so the, the single-family lot is, is in conformance, and that the proposed lot is, um, 23,371 square feet, approximately. Um, so, again, you know, I'm looking to see, you know, what's, you know, from the density point of view, that, does this, does this make sense, does it fit in, um, that type of thing? So, in that respect, um, if I look at, um, I don't even know the address is, right next door to the proposed property, the duplex that we, that we had approved some years ago, the, the duplex there, um, that's approximately, I think, total lot is about 12,000 square feet, I'm doing some rough numbers, um, and that's two units there, um, and then I kind of look at what's being proposed, and again, you know, not going because that's what was approved, it's just kind of looking at something that's nearby, and if we look at four units on 23,000 square feet, we're kind of in the same ball, ballpark. And, um, so with, with that, it's just kind of like a similarity thing. I think that, you know, there are some valid issues with, you know, about parking and all that, I, I really think that that would be, um, I would encourage that, if, if this were to move forward tonight, I would encourage that, um, anybody with questions or opposition would, or would, would show up at the planning board, because I think that's where they would, I think, uh, take care, you know, talk about the parking. So I think there is plenty of room on this property, because you've seen the property, it's pretty flat, there's not, no obstructions really. I think that the property, and with there's a garage, right, that's in the back there, but I think that this property can handle all the, all the parking that needs to be, and, and probably more than what's required. So I think that, that, you know, again, that would not be an issue for me. You know, other than that, I, I guess I don't see an issue with a single-family home. And again, this is just kind of what my thoughts are right now on the, the four-unit. I, I think, and I, I understand what you're, you were saying earlier, and I, I do agree with you, but also looking at the bigger picture and looking at, you know, what else is going on around there, and I, I think that, again, um, I, I don't think that it would change the neighborhood to the point where it would cause all types of congestion and all, all that thing. I think there's valid concerns about driveway placements and all that, but I, but I do believe, and it's, that, that is something that would be really, you know, taken up at the, the planning stage if it got there, and I, I really feel confident that, that's what they do, that, that's their expertise, um, and I would feel confident with that. So, that's not enough for me to, uh, look the other way on this one, so. Mr. Shaw.
So, I guess, I'm just not comfortable with the, the number of units total. I think I'm, I'm much more comfortable with perhaps three for the multi-unit, uh, building, uh, for a total of four on the two properties, but there's a certain reality here that by adding a single-family home, you, you are increasing the total amount of living space, bedrooms, and just overall usage. You can, I know there's different points that can be made about the multifamily unit that, whether it's carved up into two, three, four, or five units, there's some, there is some, I think, value that can be brought to either side of why that might, either any of those might be okay, because the square footage goes down per unit in that kind of a building, when you're not talking about expanding out the building to accommodate multiple. So, however, I know we oftentimes do get into the discussions that every time you have another unit, you're more likely to have additional cars, we, there is additional parking requirements anyhow, but just even sometimes the greater intensity then come with multiple units, even when they're small, I think is a valid concern. When I look at, you know, yes, there's a few of the multifamily units, but, you know, most of up and down Fowl Ave, and even in the greater part of that neighborhood back there, they're all single-family homes, so I, I think putting a single-family home is a reasonable usage of the lot and trying to actually do something there, and I think overall, the square footage of probably the two structures is probably maybe equivalent to what two single-family homes might be on this just divided into two lots. My issue comes down to, I just simply don't feel comfortable with the density of four, uh, units in that structure, and I think it needs to become more, it needs to become less non-conforming, or more conforming, in my mind. I appreciate lesser units, but, again, I argue back that there's still five units overall on the property as well, plus I'm not comfortable with the fact that that, that four unit as proposed is still only at about half the allowed density. So, I, I think I can support three units there, uh, that'll put it closer into like the fifty-five, you know, fifty-one hundred, something like that, I guess it'll be, fifty-two hundred, fifty-three hundred square feet, uh, per unit, so there's a certain, certain reasonable kind of balance there, but, uh, that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Anuto.
I'm, I'm struggling with this. Um, the, the, splitting off to make a single-family lot, you know, that's a conforming lot, that all by itself is fine, don't have a problem with that. The fact that a driveway would come out onto Powell Avenue, that's okay too. The fact that a driveway would come out onto Powell Avenue, that's okay too. The existing building, if we did nothing, the existing building would continue to be a five-family, five-unit structure. It's, it's old. It's, it's pre-existing. So there's no change in usage there. We're not imposing any restriction on that existing structure. But anytime a material change to a lot or str-, or structure comes before us, we need to evaluate that proposal in light of the current zoning and, you know, also look at, at the neighborhood. Not, I mean, the, not only is, yes, the, the number of building square feet per unit is going to go up a little bit, but the people who live there are going to have significantly less land to reside on than they did before. So I, I sort of agree with Mr. Shaw that if this proposal was to reduce the number of units to three, I would be much more likely to be in favor of it. We have, you know, in my tenure on the board, which is less than the rest of you, we've tended to reject requests to have that little square footage per unit for a multifamily house. You know, where they're trying to create a multifamily house. So, you know, our, as Mr. Shaw said, our, our goal is to try to guide the, the city into more conforming uses where changes are being requested. And I, I'm, I'm really having trouble with approving that at four units.
Just for clarification, right, if it, if it were to make the planning board stage, right, the existing house would that have to come into conformance with the case building codes, with anything that was being done inside? Because it was, it would be a reduction of four to five, I mean, five to four.
JP, maybe you need to speak up a little-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm asking Mr. Fark if there would be the new, the, the existing structure that would go from five units to four, because of that, I'm sure they have to pull a building permit, right? Would they, would they have to come up to code on, on all of it or just units that they would be rehabbing?
Um, that's a, that could be an involved question because I'm not sure what the layout of the units are within the building. And it's not like a two units or two units or some, I, I don't know the configuration. So it depends on what walls are being removed. And I don't, I don't really have a layout of, or we don't have a layout of showing where the individual units are within the building. I don't even know if I could answer that right now. My guess is they're definitely going to have to pull a building permit to do any of the demolition inside because we'll have to see if there's going to be a removal of any load-bearing walls. There's going to have to be probably electric that's going to be moved. There could be plumbing that's going to be involved, maybe some mechanical issues. So I would assume that they would definitely have to have a building permit, but as far as me, as far as the, the construction coming up to today's code, that gets involved with different years, building codes, depending on when the building was built. I'm not really qualified to really answer.
Okay.
I, I would presume that they would definitely need a building permit, but to what extent, that's not what our, our call or my call.
The only reason is that sometimes, you know, there is some value in, when something's done, right, because something is brought up to a different code, right? So again, you know, from the point of view of safety and all, all that for residents. So it sounds like both of you are maybe thinking of a lesser, lesser intrusion to that. So are you thinking that you, that one of you would make a motion for?
Mr. Fark, you want to say?
Um, I don't think we can do that, can we?
That, that's kind of tricky because if there's five units in there right now, I'm not aware if all five of them are occupied or if just four are occupied. And I don't know if the board wants to be in a position where even if you do support three, that could mean the owner evicting somebody or taking, or removing someone from their home. I don't think that's a direction I'm going.
Well, if, if they're, assuming there are five units occupied now, they're not going to, I don't think they're going to take one of those and move it into the single-family home.
Probably not.
Probably not. Unfortunately, sir, you-
I mean, I-
We, we could reopen them.
You can choose to yield.
We, we can, we can make a motion, yes.
Mr. Shaw, what's your thoughts?
I'm okay with, I, I think this was advertised with the four. There's going to be all kinds of different numbers and calculations for land area and debt, density per unit. I think the board has to consider the case as presented. Every one of these numbers in the advertisement's going to be different.
I wasn't, I wasn't, and again, I didn't, I didn't know what we could have, couldn't do. I just didn't know if that's where you guys were, were standing.
Land area per unit, three units, four units, five units, all that's going to be changed. And it was advertised as four, going to four. So-
I was, I was just bringing this up because I didn't know if you, in your mind, you are, again, thinking generally like what we can do, right, is always approve something of a lesser.
Right.
But I'm not, I'm just asking whether or not that's where you're at right now or because, you know, there is some validity with Mr. Cott-, Mr. Fox saying, but I also do believe though that we still have this ability to do just that, right? And again, if, if that's something that you felt strongly about, we felt strongly about and talking about our, doing this correctly with our rules, whether or not we would table this so that calculations could be made, if that's where we're going to go. But I don't know what that means in the next meeting. And again, so I don't know what the ramifications are going forward.
Well, I mean, I, I think the, the way it works, or it would work is we can ask the applicant to withdraw the application, and then we can, we can consider a different one at a different meeting. Tabling it, you usually table just to get more information, as Mr. Fark was saying. If such a material change would require re-advertising, probably.
Although it is a lesser request.
Yeah, that's where I'm, like, I know, I understand your point about different numbers, but we've historically, when things are a lesser impact, I've, I really didn't think we've generally believed there was a need for re-ad，则tisment or, or anything like that. I know sometimes it's more straightforward because we're talking about, okay, we're going to only approve, you know, three-feet encroachment instead of seven-feet encroachment into a setback. It's much more straightforward as far as the numbers, but it's still technically different than what was advertised. So to me, it seems like the argument would possibly be that we shouldn't even be doing that, but we do that all the time by practice, so.
Yeah. I mean, lesser is always better with, you know, in terms like this, as far as units and density and overall impacts to utilities and traffic and other matters with the site. The add would be a lot different. I, I don't know what all those numbers would be, and even if the applicant is amenable to the three units, that's really up to them.
And that, that is one of the most important aspects is-
I mean, if you wanted to possibly reopen the public hearing, just ask one specific question and not open up the whole, you know, those canals.
Yeah. I would maybe suggest we do reopen the public hearing to inquire of Mr. Maynard. I guess two things. One would be something along the lines of an openness to, or what the reaction would be on behalf of the applicant for going with the lesser units, but also if there's interest in us tabling this case as allowing some further evaluation or investigation to be done. So that would be why, why I think we could, should perhaps inquire of Mr. Maynard. So I'll make that motion to reopen the public hearing for those inquiries.
I'll second.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Lionel. All in favor? Three and nothing. Mr. Maynard? Mr. Maynard? Come on up. We've, we've opened up for two specific questions.
Sure.
Again, you've been listening to discussion. The first one is whether or not you, you are, or your client are amenable to lesser units as you're following our discussion. And then number two, or tabling this for further, so that you can further think about what you may, or what you might want to do separately.
Tabling solves nothing, okay? It just procrastinates and pushes it on. So if you, if the board's inclined to approve three, then I would like you to go forward and, and do that because if my client doesn't like that, then we can always appeal in, in that regard. So-
Okay.
Postponing and deferring it doesn't solve anything, except taking everybody up's time and things like that. So if it's inclined to approve a lesser amount, then, then we request, I would prefer that the board go forward. And if my client doesn't like that, then we'll appeal it as opposed to the other way around with deferring for another month or so.
I will caution you that if you appeal and your appeal is denied, you can't do anything. And you won't be able to bring it back before us because of the Fisher v. Dover rule.
Uh, I'm not sure what you're telling me.
What I'm telling you is that if we, let's say that we approve three.
Three, yes.
Your client says, no, I don't want three, I want four. And you appeal, the, your, your basis for appeal is very limited. It can't simply be, I don't like this. You have-
Can't hear you.
The, your basis for appeal is limited. You, the first thing that happens is there's a rehearing request, and we would be-
If you're trying to explain to me the rules, I've done this for forty years. I know what you're-
Okay.
-trying to say, and I don't agree with what you're telling me. If you approve three, that's definitely appealable. Doesn't necessarily mean you'll overturn and agree with me on the appeal, but it's definitely appealable. So.
It's up to you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Maynard?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Maynard. All right. I'll close the public hearing. And we, we can't take any more testimony, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sir.
Change the agenda so we are here late, but we have, we've been through.
I'm, 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 I'm sorry, sir. We, we had a, we, the meeting started at six-thirty. I appreciate what you're saying.
Is that right? We were third on the agenda.
Yes, you are third on the agenda, and, and that's where we are on the, it's third.
It always starts at six-thirty.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, so the meeting starts at six-thirty, and it, and unfortunately, this is where we're at. So I'm sorry.
You get to the public speaker again. Speak to the amendment.
Excuse me, first of all, folks. Excuse me. First of all, if you're speaking from the audience, you're not into the microphone. It's not recorded, no, excuse me, it's not an invitation to come to the microphone. Pardon me, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, sir.
We have very specific rules. We reopened the public hearing to ask Mr. Maynard a very specific question regarding whether or not there was benefit to tabling the case or not. We have heard the first two cases tonight, starting from six-thirty, as scheduled, as advertised, as we are. Those two cases went relatively quickly, and we are into the third case and finishing up the third case. So I don't know where you got your information about seven PM, but that is not something that is as advertised or as scheduled. You got bad information somewhere. We already took, we already took all, we already took all the testimony from the public earlier. I apologize because I think you probably have information we'd like to hear, but we already have closed the public hearing and are deliberating. We had already started our deliberations.
Okay. So I'll just finish up with saying this, is that no matter what decision is made tonight, you can, anybody that has standing can appeal this decision. This is why there's a thirty-day window of appeal, and you can make, make that appeal and present more information that wasn't presented. This is what we look at, is if there's more, there's more information that we did not have when we, when we heard the case. So I would encourage you that if you have information at this point that would be important, you are welcome to file an appeal, and that can be done by contacting Mr. Fark at the planning board. Okay? Again, I'm sorry, but there are specific rules we have to follow, as Mr. Shaw said. And thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Shaw has several years of experience, has, has led us to chair. So again, it's not that we're being rude. We just want you to understand that legally, we have to follow specific guidelines because if this were to go to the Supreme Court, we want to make sure that we followed all the rules, our rules. Okay? So thank you. So with that, I'll, I'll close the public hearing again and open the public meeting. So we've heard Mr. Maynard suggest that he would be amenable to the three units at this point to make, so-
And no, and no desire to table, that there's no-
Right.
Re-visiting or reconsideration on the applicant's part, so that, I understand that that does them no good, so that's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
Right. And I, and I think while you're offering that, sometimes people don't really know-
Right.
-or they want to maybe think about it, so, or need to re-engineer or something. Okay. So any other discussion that we need to have, or it sounds like that we, we have both of you that would be amenable to three units, right?
Yeah.
I, I will support that. So if anybody wants to make a motion?
Want me to give it a try?
Please do.
We might have a little delay then when I have to-
That's okay. We can take a break.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Louis Tremley, three seventy-one Main Street, Sheet one oh eight, Lot one oh two. The request is for a variance from our news code, Section one ninety dash sixteen, Table sixteen dash three for lot density, to reduce the existing twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-two square-foot lot with a five-unit multifamily building to a fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two square-foot lot with four multifamily units, thereby reducing the existing density of forty-six, seventy-four square feet per dwelling unit to thirty-nine, sixty-eight square feet per dwelling unit, where seventy-two, sixty square feet per dwelling unit is required. This is in the RA zone. The motion I'm going to make is to approve with a reduction in, from what was applied in that instead of supporting four multifamily units, to only support three multifamily units. While I don't have the exact square footage, it will be just slightly under five thousand, three hundred square feet for that.
Five, five two nine oh.
Five two nine oh, square feet. Thank you. So that will, that would be the density. So the, the reasoning is that the, the variance has been requested for the applicant's special proposed use of the property and that the desire to create a single-family home on the front part of the property and keep the multifamily unit on the property, but reduce the number of units. So the feeling that we have is that there is some multifamily density and usage in this neighborhood, but it's fairly limited. And since the structure is not actually changing, there won't be necessarily a greater square footage for the multifamily unit, but by having lesser units in that structure, there will still be a closer density to what is allowed by code for the multifamily dwelling unit. There, it's within the spirit and ten of the ordinance. There's been testimony regarding concern about property values of surrounding parcels, but there is no strong evidence one way or the other as to whether there will be any negative effects on property values. It's not contrary to public interest. It's not contrary to public interest, the applicant did note that by removing the driveway off Main Street and having it on Foul Avenue, there will be some benefit to the public from a safety perspective, although one of the abutters did express concern about the amount of traffic and parking on Foul Avenue. The board still feels that that is an issue that will ultimately get addressed by the planning board, when this application would ultimately get followed up on, and substantial justice will be served. So, with that, again, I make the motion to approve with the noted reduction to three units for the multifamily.
Second by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion? All in favor? Three to nothing, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Again, Mr. Maynard, I know you're all aware of the thirty-day window of appeal. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number three, and I'll take a short, five-minute break. Thank you, Mr. Shaw, I appreciate that. All right, I'll open the public hearing for case number four, for Margaret Bernier, owner, L., Meredith Drive, Sheet E., Lot 1326, requesting the following variances from land use code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3. One, a minimum lot frontage, seventy-five feet required, zero feet proposed, and two, minimum lot width, ninety feet required, zero feet proposed, to construct a new single-family home on a vacant lot of record that does not have a paved frontage on a constructed public road. It's in the R9 zone. Is somebody here? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Thomas J. Leonard, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, I'm a lawyer here in Nashua at 29 Factory Street.
Could you speak closer to the microphone, please? You can pull the microphone out if you wish.
Is that better?
That's better, thank you.
So, my name is Thomas J. Leonard, I'm a lawyer here in Nashua at 29 Factory Street, here representing Ms. Brenner and Doug Brenner, we have them, both Doug and Margaret are here tonight with us. My, my first question is, I'm not sure how this board likes to proceed on less than a full board. We, of course, are, understand that we need three votes to prevail. Do you allow us to withdraw, to go to an...
No.
I didn't think you did, and I wanted to ask.
We're required by local ordinance to hear all cases, as long as we have the three-member forum.
Okay. So, I'm, I, of course, am concerned with that, so I, I will state the standard statement. I reserve the right, I reserve the right to object to whatever happens by three of you, but I understand what you're, what you're saying, and I appreciate the, the comment and the information. I think this is a relatively straightforward thing, and I'll, I'll try to be as direct and brief as possible. You should have with you the application which we filed, which has two recorded plans, Plan Number 2319 and 2423. Those are copies of plans from the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds. I've outlined the particular lot in green, so that's pretty straightforward. You can see that this is an old subdivision, part of Broad Acres, right across the street, basically, across the street from Birch Hill School, or in that neighborhood, we'll say. You also should have two GIS maps that I printed from the town, from the city of Nashua's GIS information. What it does is, the lot that we have in question here today is the only lot that's undeveloped in the neighborhood, and it happens to be in between two sections of Meredith Drive that are finished. There's a lower section that's paved and completed, and then there's an upper section that's paved, and there's a little bit of a gap, and this is the only lot that is affected by that gap. I've also included in the application a deed to Mr. or to Ms. Brenner. It's a deed for this lot, you can see that it is a separate lot of record, it's a non-conforming lot, as it has been in existence for, since 1961 or two, and I, the deed is in the packet. And then the last thing, of course, is our statement of facts, and that's in the packet, and I hope you've had a chance to take a quick look at that. But basically, what we have is, this is a lot on Meredith Drive, it's a vacant lot, it was bought as a single-family lot, and it has always been treated as a single-family lot. The only thing that's a little bit awkward about it is that Meredith Drive never got completed. It was dedicated as a public road, constructed as a public road for all but that little gap that you can see on both the GIS plan and the, the other plan. Our lot, and it doesn't have a number, so I'm going to have to refer to it as the subject lot or our lot, I think it would end up being number five, Meredith, but in any event, it's not numbered as yet. Right now, it's approximately 15,850 square feet, it's roughly a rectangle of 120 by 125. The zone is R9, which requires 9,000 square feet. The difficulty here is that in the Nashua ordinance, frontage, of course, requires a public way, and a public way requires it being completed in terms of pavement and construction, and this is not, so it's not considered frontage, even though it has the same shape, et cetera, and it is on a public, a proposed public way. So, Meredith Drive, as I say, was dedicated, it was not constructed. As a result of the lapsing, or the passing of time, right now, the public rights in that have been lost, so the city of Nashua could not come in and pave that. But all of the abutters have rights, and they have legal rights that are guaranteed both by statutory and case law, so that each lot along that road has the right to use it for access. And right now, the abutters own to the middle, but it's subject to all the other lots having the right to build the road as access and to use the road as access. This proposal here today is a proposal to use the lot as a single-family lot, in other words, as it was designed, nothing different than was initially designed, and nothing different than everybody who is presently located on the road. The only difference is that we don't want to build the public road to public standards, rather, we would propose to have a private drive from the lower level of Meredith Drive, rather than the upper level. The lower level is the, you can see it in the elevations and in the aerial, but it's basically Birch Hill is what I'm going to call the upper level. So, the lower level is where the houses are now. The proposal is to provide a private driveway, which will come off the end of the present public way. There's a short distance that it would take, and I, we have not actually measured it, but it's something in the vicinity of ten to thirty feet, we'll say, where there would be a private drive within the way, if you will, the Meredith Drive boundaries, and then immediately access the lot, the Brenner lot. So, it would be, but it would be a private driveway. The reason for accessing from Meredith Drive is that the topography of the lot that we're talking about is rela, it's a large lot, it's almost twice as large as, as required by zoning, but the lower part of the lot is much, much more level than the upper part. There's a, some topographical difficulties at the top on the Birch Hill side, so the house would be at the lower side, but even, even on the lower side, it's substantially larger than the rest of the lots in the immediate, or than the zoning is required. The lot would be served by both public water and public sewer, as they are both within Meredith Drive, and I think it's important to note that Meredith Drive is the only access for this lot, it was, it was designed to be accessed by this lot. Our proposal is for a private road and not the public road, and we have, in an effort to talk to some of the abutters, and we specifically represented to them that we, the Brenners, will stipulate that we will not build the road through road. Most of the abutters' concerns relate to the through road, they do not want to have the two portions of Meredith Drive connected, because it then becomes a connected road to the schools, et cetera. They like the dead end. We would, on the record, say that should you grant this variance, we will make sure, and we can restrict the deed if it's, if it's interesting to the board, but we are willing to make it a condition that whoever builds a home on this lot not connect the two roads through as a public road. We are only interested in a private drive for access. As I say, we have spoken to some of the neighbors, some of the neighbors are concerned about snow, we would also agree, so I, I actually have some pictures that may be helpful, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And I'll pass them all out at once, and, and I'm not a photographer, and I'm sure you're going to be able to see. The first...
Yeah, you need the mic, sir.
Let me, let me tell you, I will explain them in order and then pass them around. The first one is actually number three, Meredith Drive. Now, number three, Meredith Drive, is actually a lot that is almost exactly like this, only across the road. It is beyond the end of the public paved drive, and it accesses that public paved road with a private drive, so it's, it's just on the other side of the unpaved portion. So, the first picture I have is that house, and you can actually see the broken pavement, that would be the end of the pavement of the public way. The next two pictures are pictures of Meredith Drive, looking from the bottom up, so it's looking at the uphill section, and I put a red mark to mark the center of the road, just for reference. And then the last picture I have is the picture of the Brenner lot, and you can see the sign that we put, and if you look closely, you can also see the corner mark, and I think... So, one of the concerns that one of the abutters raised was snow storage, and you can see that at the end of the presently paved public road, there's a lot of vegetation. In speaking with the Brenners, they would be willing to clear the vegetation if this board thought it appropriate, clear the vegetation for an additional ten, fifteen, twenty feet, not pave it, I don't think anybody wants it paved, but at least clear it so that it's an obvious place for additional storage, if that's interesting to the board. It's not important to our proposal, it's just an effort to help alleviate some concerns. But in any event, as I say, the purpose is really just these two, a variance from the two sections that are really definitional in a sense. One is frontage, the reason we don't have frontage is it is defined as being on a finished public way, and this is not finished. And the second one is the width of the lot, because of course, that also follows the, the meaning of frontage. That's what the zoning variance is, is for here tonight. Running through the arguments quickly, I think it is pretty clear that this is not contrary to the public interest, there's basically no impact to the zoning scheme, it is consistent with the zoning scheme, it is what was planned from the very beginning. The trouble is that the public road wasn't finished, this actually will have less impact than the, than the planned zoning scheme. It certainly doesn't change the character of the neighborhood, the proposal can be accomplished. Usually, frontage is an effort to keep separation of homes and to prevent overcrowding and provide access to public vehicles. A private drive, under these circumstances, and for this lot only, will do the same thing. There's really not going to be any more dense development than was initially proposed, we can build a private drive much the same way as the house across the street, and be perfectly safe, and, and certainly accomplish all the goals of the zoning. There's no threat to public safety, public welfare is really part of the scheme, and it's a very reasonable use without, without the need for any additional municipal expense. There's a very good argument, I think, that the option here would be if you built the public road, which of course, requires municipal expense, I don't think the butters are wanting, I don't think the butters want it, and I feel confident that the city doesn't really want it either. The private drive kind of serves everybody's purpose in that regard. As far as the spirit of the ordinance, again, it's consistent with the initial plan, it's not contrary to the public interest, there's no interference with any other public rights, and it's very consistent with the neighborhood. With regard to substantial justice, there's no benefit to the city at all to require a public road. It doesn't accomplish any purpose of the zoning, and it doesn't provide any advantage to the city, and of course, it's a disadvantage to everyone in the neighborhood and a disadvantage to this lot owner, so there's a lot of reasons not to do that, and that's really what substantial justice is. It won't diminish the values of surrounding properties, because it, again, is consistent with what everybody expected right from the beginning. With regard to the unnecessary hardship, I think the lot is, it's presently vacant, it was conveyed as a single-family lot, everybody expected it as a single-family lot, it has ample area, larger than is required by zone, requiring construction is not a reasonable demand under these circumstances. It is the only lot that is not developed, and it is the only lot that can make this same argument. It, it really is a very specific request, public, constructing the public road is no benefit to the city, and really, the sum of it is that no fair and substantial relationship exists between requiring the public road, as opposed to permitting this variance, there's no real advantage to anybody. And the last thing I would say is that there have been other variances in very similar circumstances in different neighborhoods. Boylston Street, down at the, well, Boylston Street has a similar set of circumstances, and there was a variance granted there. There was also a variance granted on Edson Street for the same kind of thing. So, it's an unusual circumstance that comes up every now and then on these paper streets, usually when they can't be constructed, and it, and it makes a lot of sense to have a private drive rather than the public road, and, and I think that's pretty much what most of the butters prefer as well. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to answer any questions. We do, I do have Mr. and Mrs. Brenner here. They, they can perhaps answer questions. You'll see that we didn't really put any, we didn't locate the house, and that was on purpose. There's ample area for a home, and the Brenners are not in the construction business. If, if you have a question on that, we'll try to answer it, but we did that on purpose. We're trying to leave some flexibility there. The only absolute commitment that we have is that it will be a, a private drive off the end of the paved road, and it won't affect anybody's property rights.
Mr. Lino.
Sort of more of a education of myself question. You mentioned Boylston, because that's, that's in my neighborhood, and I don't, and I'm trying to remember what, I think I know the situation you're talking about. What legal right is there for a one-lot owner to build a, a private drive in, in this shared right-of-way area?
So, it is a very established legal right, but it's a confusing one, confusing one. And so, basically, what happens is when a planning board lays out a road in a subdivision, that is a dedication. And so, the property is dedicated to the city of Nashua for purposes of a, a road. Usually, what happens is someone builds that road, and the building, and then, when the town accepts it, it becomes a public road forever, unless you take formal action to, to close it. That hasn't always been true throughout history. So, for, at different times in history, the rules have changed, but basically, the rule is now that when you dedicate it, if it doesn't get built within twenty years, and actually, I shouldn't say this is a rule now. This is what the rule used to be about twenty years ago. If you didn't build it within a certain period of time, then the public, that is, the city, lost its right to finish it, and lost its right to accept it. But as a result, the abutting owners became the owners. So, all of the owners along the public, the proposed public way effectively own to the middle of the road.
Right.
But it's subject to all of the subdivision lot owners having the right to use that space for access, because of course, they all bought expecting that to be a road. So, anyone on the road would have the right to, to use that space for access, or they could actually even build the road and propose it as a public road. It's just that the city can't do it. So, there are now, the, the, the public rights get terminated. The private rights do not. And that, so what we're talking about is private rights for access to their lot, consistent which, with rights that were originally public. I'm not sure I clarified anything there, but that is what happens.
Maybe you can help me on this.
I think what Attorney Leonard said is correct. I think there's one only, one other addition is, after the twenty years, I believe the Board of Alderman has to officially extinguish that right-of-way. Because after that happens, then the homeowners on either side of the street, they can get half of that right-of-way. But that's also going to change their deeds, their assessed value, their property values. All that will be increased quick, as they're gaining a couple thousand square feet of land. But, and I don't believe that, that Board of Alderman has actually officially extinguished, extinguished this little portion of Meredith.
No, they have not.
It still shows up on our, on our maps as part of a, basically, kind of like a paper street.
So, that's, that's true, that the Board of Alderman has not done anything with this little area. The timing of things varies. The end result is the same, that, that the Brenners have the right to use it to get to their land. And I, I suppose the other end result is that the butters, that's what the butters want, and, and of course, that's what we want.
Thank you.
Mr. Falk.
That, that's true, and, and, you know, the right-of-way, you know, the actual dimension of that right-of-way, where the pavement would be to connect these two little stubs, it, it's still there. It hasn't been extinguished, and like Attorney Leonard said, the applicant to this one lot, this one remaining lot, would have to work with the Department of Public Works to show detailed plans of where a driveway might, might be located, you know, the thickness of it. You know, they're going to have to show all the construction drawings of how it would connect from the end of Meredith up here down to the private lot. And once it's in a private lot, you know, we don't really care what, what it does, as long as it's not more than twenty-four feet wide. So, there's just that little, little section where they would start, start their driveway at the end of the paved part of Meredith and just go into their lot.
And you can actually see in the other house, in that first picture that I passed around, you can see how they addressed it.
Yeah.
And I would expect we'd address it in a similar fashion. You just basically put the driveway off the end of the public way, and then you take a turn into the lot. I, I think I said, but I, I want to make it clear, we're not asking for any variation or variance of any other rules, not, not with regard to the size of a driveway, not with regard to setbacks. Everything else is, you know, we understand we have to abide by.
Any other questions for Attorney Leonard? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody with questions or concerns with this application? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Go ahead, Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I agree with Attorney Leonard. It does seem, in many ways, this is a definitional thing, but it's certainly very unique and interesting that this, this kind of like, what almost seems like a no man's land, is this paper street, but public way, and how to get the access. So, the, the fact that the lot really has, by every other kind of way we would think about it, the sufficient frontage and sufficient width, if it is proposed by the original subdivision, but by implementation and the lack of the, the street having been built there, it kind of negates that. But I think for the intent of the zoning ordinance, this lot is the way it should be, as intended. It's just, again, the street never kind of came with it like it should have from the beginning, apparently. So, there's a curiosity, it's like, why it happened this way, but it's obviously from quite a long time ago, and it is, it's the way it, it developed or didn't develop. So, I, my biggest concerns were, probably still are, and Mr. Falk ended up answering one thing I was going to kind of try to inquire about, but that was, the, I figured there needed to be some kind of effort ultimately with the Streets Department, DPW, as to how this work gets handled that is still in the public way, and that was my bigger concern than anything. But as far as providing the relief to the property owner, to me, it seems the fair, reasonable thing to do, so that they can actually have the usage of their property as essentially what was intended from the very beginning.
Mr. Lino.
I agree with everything Mr. Shaw said. I, I was just, wanted to understand what the process was, and that's been explained, and I support this.
Okay. I, I also agree with, with what you're saying. I support this application. For the record, I, I missed this in the public hearing. There was one letter in support, and I just want to just kind of summarize that. There was one letter in support of this application, as long as the access was not from the Birch Hill side, and that was from Nehru to Dan Dakar of Levin Birch Hill Drive. So, I just want to get that in the record. Other than that, any other, any other discussion? Okay. I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion for Margaret Brenner, owner of L. Meredith Drive, Sheet E., Lot 1326, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3. One, a minimum lot frontage, seventy-five feet required, zero feet proposed. And two, minimum lot width, ninety feet required, zero feet proposed, to construct a new single-family home on a vacant lot of record that does not have paved frontage on a constructed public road. It's in the R9 zoning district. Variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Special conditions are, is that this property is a lot of record, going back to the early sixties. Meredith Drive was planned to go all the way through the Birch Hill, but was never built out. Discussion was that there is a, still a, a, a right-of-way or delineation. The street was never, there was no action taken by the Board of Alderman, so this, this area of Meredith Drive is, you know, available for public access. And to note that Three Birch Hill Drive, a home across the street, has done a similar type of a, a thing where they added an existing driveway in that right-of-way to access their property. So, there is really no other way that this applicant can get, uh, access, though there is, off of Birch Hill Drive, but it is the, the wishes and concerns of all the butters that there's no access from Birch Hill Drive or any throughway through the neighborhood, through that area, and this is the preferred method of access to this property. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible, as we discussed, and for the applicant to pursue, than, than an area variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels, is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served. Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw? Any discussion? All in favor? That's three to nothing. Congratulations, your motion passes. Again, this is a third-day win of appeal, but good luck. Thank you. With that, I'll close case number four, and I will give Mr. Shaw a few seconds to catch Do I, you need to take a break? No? Okay. You all set? Okay. All right, I'd like to open the public hearing for case number five. Gilda Thomas, owner, Nineteen Grace Drive, Sheet C., Lot 2234, requesting variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-44, to exceed maximum fence height. Six feet permitted, eight feet requested, for a section along the rear and right sides of the property. It's in the R9 zoning district. Come on up. Can you just see your name and address? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Peter Thomas, Gilda Thomas's husband, and we've lived in the property Nineteen Grace Drive for approximately twenty-eight years. I'm a concrete contractor in Nashville, New Hampshire. Been here for twenty-eight years. And I want to do what I do for everybody else in my backyard. I want to do something beautiful. My neighbor right next door, Heidi and Duncan McIntosh, I've got a patent picked up for them. They're going to be the opposing neighbors, that the other wall's going to go to. The person directly in back of me is Guy and Monique, not sure what their last name is, but they can't even see me because of the bushes and trees that are there. I've got that on video, just if you guys want to see it. The wall's going to be eight feet high on my side, but on Duncan and Heidi's side, they're going to level the yard out, which is going to bring it up to about five and a half feet on their side, once the yard is leveled, going up against the wall. It's going to be in a cut, like limestone shape. It's going to be beautiful. It won't adversely affect anybody around me. The neighbors in the front of it, in the front of us can't even see the backyard, and the only person that can see it, Heidi and Duncan, are going to benefit from it, because their yard will be allowed to be leveled.
So, the, 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 the neighbors that you're talking about right now are at seventeen, right?
I believe so, Duncan and Heidi.
To the right of you, right? If you're facing the house-
If you're standing, if you're standing in my, looking at the house, Mr. Bushad, it's on the right-hand side, yes.
Yeah, because when I drove by, I noticed that there was a, you know, cinder block wall built-
Right.
-up to the, to the front line of the property, house line.
Right.
Okay. So, those are the neighbors you're talking about, that you're going to be putting some design on that?
Yeah. I asked Heidi what she wanted, and she wants like a stacked slate pattern.
Right. Okay. And then you, then you, this, is this go, is this where you're building a cinder block all the way up, or is it going to be some fence on top of it? What is it?
No, it's going to be all the way up.
All the way up?
All the way up.
All right.
And then what I do is I, I have a hopper. I put a polymer cement inside a hopper gun, and I spray it on the wall. I let it set up, and then I, I hand carve it to make it look like, like slate, or fieldstone, or limestone. This is going to look like limestone with exposed granite, like a Tuscany Village. My wife's from Italy, her family, so I'm going to put them back there when they come in the back of a house. It's going to be beautiful. I've been doing this for thirty, thirty-five years, and I do it for everybody else, and I said to my wife, we decided we were going to stay there. We have two daughters. They're in their teenage years, and I'm trying to lure them to staying in there, in the house until they get married. So, this is just another plot I get, you know?
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
I, I wish I had known about, about you several years ago.
You know what? I'm sitting over there listening to you guys, and I'm like, you, you would never think there's all these laws and regulations and zones and codes. God almighty, I, I pity you guys.
The six, the six-foot regulation, that I, I know about.
You could hold your book up, and, yeah, it's-
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, this is the thing that we have-
Hundreds of pages.
Hundreds of-
Hundreds of pages of laws.
Yeah.
We're only going through about maybe a thousandth of it.
And Cotty, you know something? Me and my wife were talking, and you sound like a kid on the phone. You really do. You sound like you're about seventeen, eighteen years old on the phone.
Yeah, oh, I, I try, because I'm like sixty, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm right there with you, fifty-eight.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I, I'm just curious as to why you're only doing a fence on, sort of halfway on, on each-
Well, the way the yard goes, like, on Guy's property, it's, it's straight, and then it dips down. And that's where my pool is, in that corner, it dips down.
Okay.
So, it's really going to be level, you know, it's really going to be level with the rest of the yard, but what it is, is I'm figuring like this. That's where the pool is, the area is. I want the eight feet, because teenage girls got friends, and there's going to be a lot of people over there, and I want to try to contain everything. I'm going to put lanterns off the walls, and I don't want people walking underneath them banging their head. That's why I need the eight-foot height, you know, when they go out. I want them sitting in like a little bistro. It's going to be cool. I'll, I'll bring you guys back pictures and show it to you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? You want to come up, or? Okay, all right. Thank you. Seeing none, anybody with questions, oppositions, or concerns? All right, seeing none, close the public hearing and open the public meeting. And again, there's really nobody here to dispute that. I mean, I was looking at, it's already partially constructed. I mean, he's got a really steep slope on the left, backside of his property. I was trying to figure out whether or not it was going to be all, well, what he's kind of described what it is, so I could understand now why the neighbor has no issues, because they're going to end up with something really nice to look at. So, so with that, I, I don't have any objections to this application.
I don't either. It's the, the sort of thing that I would put in myself.
And I think with the pool and the kind of the topography and all, it also makes sense to have the greater height.
Okay. Would you like me to make a motion? Okay. I'd like to make a motion for Gilda Thomas, owner of Nineteen Grace Drive, Sheet C., Lot 2234, requesting a variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-44, to exceed maximum fence height. Six feet permitted, eight feet requested, for a section along the rear and right sides of the property. It's in the R9 zoning district. Variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. I talked about the sloping condition, but real truly, there, there is a pool in the lower back right of the property. This, 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 this fencing, this wall will contain that, the activities back there, and, and again, will enhance the physical appearance and, and of the property, and, and the neighbor on the right side is going to benefit with this, with this new wall of fence. on the right side is going to benefit with this, with this new wall of fence. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. It is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. It is not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lino, any discussion? None? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? That's three to nothing. Congratulations. Again, you've heard me all night long, third-day window of appeal. I know you're already kind of halfway there, but just a fair warning. But good luck and enjoy. Thank you for coming.
I'll check it out. I get a dead end.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much, Shaw, but we'll be back in a few minutes.
With that, I'll close case number five and give Mr. Shaw a few seconds to, a few minutes to catch up. All right, with that, I'll open case number six, open the public hearing for case number six, for Aaron J. and James V. Batello. I apologize if I mispronounced that. Owners of 35 Mead Street, Sheet 137A, Lot 49, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach four feet into the 10-foot required right-side yard setback to construct an attached garage addition. It's in the RA zone. Welcome.
Thank you. I am Aaron Batello. I am the sole representative for the property. My mother has passed away, and my father has conveyed interest to me as registered with the state of New Hampshire through attorney William Barry last week, so that's probably why it still shows up with both our names. I am seeking, I'm a bit of a gearhead. I mean, I, I've never done this before, so I was kind of trying to figure out how this properly goes. I mean, I'm a bit of a gearhead. I collect cars. The neighborhood that I live in was built the late 50s, early 60s as a planned development, so originally, they were all very similar homes, but over the time, a lot of the three-bedroom ranches had a garage installed, shed done, some of them have had second floors, so now it's a much broader melting pot of a neighborhood. And due to the orientation of my lot, the border in question is a side border. It abuts the rear border of my neighbor's lot. It will maintain a larger-than-average gap that you would see between two homes, no matter what. I mean, he could even vary 10 feet in, and there would still be more than the minimum setback kind of between homes. It's not really going to affect property density. Other than that, I don't really know what to say. My neighbors haven't really expressed any disdain for the project. I, I would like the ability to park my vehicles indoors rather than outdoors, and to be real honest, the abutter on that side likes to store junk cars in his backyard, doesn't really mow the lawn, the railing's falling off his deck. I wouldn't mind not being able to see it. That's, I mean, the truth. Other than that, it's not going to be giant compared to anything else in the neighborhood. It's not going to be the smallest. It's, I don't know if it would be noticeable after it was done, and that's about it.
Okay. Mr. Lino.
What are the aesthetics of this addition going to be? Is it going to simply look like the existing garage?
So, basically, I would be adding 16 feet in width with a garage door, just like the other garage door next to it. I would be adding a little bit of, so I'm going to add approximately two feet of height to the peak height of the building overall, over that bay of the garage. Down the right side, it's going to be, I included a plot plan with the shape of it, so...
You did, but you didn't include...
From the front, it would appear to be basically like a two-car garage with kind of like a great room over it, but there's not going to be a great room inside. It's just going to be open.
What's the, what's the peak height going to be?
I honestly don't know off the top of my head, sir.
The reason I ask is that there is an ordinance limiting the peak height within 10 feet of the property line, if I recall correctly?
That's if it's a detached...
Correct. Yeah, the maximum peak height for detached is 16 feet. Maximum square foot is 200 square feet.
Right, Mr. Lino. If it's, if it's a totally detached structure, then the height can't be 10, well, 12 feet within 10 feet of the property line, but his is all, all attached, so that part of the code doesn't apply.
Okay, thank you. Yeah?
My, my goal is to make it look like a two, like originally, there was planned to be a two-car garage. One of the big reasons I want to do this is, for some reason, when they built these homes, my single-car garage does not go full depth to the back of my home. My kitchen actually goes behind it. So I literally have like a car in a storage unit, I've got a car in a shed, you know, I can't park a normal-sized vehicle in the garage that's attached to my home already. And so I'm trying to build kind of something that, from the street, won't look like much, but once you pull in, you know, you've got a good bit of distance, a good bit of storage, and you're not looking at cars sitting around.
Okay, and I see that you have 18 feet of driveway, which is within the require, the limit of 24 feet, so that's fine.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Shaw.
So there's not any planned living space or finished space above...
No, no, this is just to be a garage and workshop and storage area. No, not even an enclosed room in the top. There'll be a mezzanine for like boxes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing there's nobody left in the audience, so there, for the record, I'm sure that there's nobody here to speak in favor or anybody else in opposition of this application, so I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. I'm in favor of this application. You know, the incursion is my, is, you know, relatively minor, and again, looking at the neighborhood and the way the houses are staged, you know, I kind of see what, you know, he's trying to do, trying to get things inside and trying to, you know, make things look a little better. And so I have no, no issues with that. And then looking at the neighbor that's most affected, again, and he did point out the houses further away, again, you know, I don't necessarily look at the condition of the properties to make a decision, but again, there is, I think, it's not like the other homes on top of their, you know, they're not in their, their setback or right on it, so I don't think there's any issues there. So I would support the application as it stands. Mr. Shaw.
I pretty much concur, and, yeah, especially with that kind of corner lot situation, and basically the rear yard of the adjacent lot being the one that's most affected, so I feel like this might be a little different if it was two, two immediate side yards. I'd have greater concern.
Mr. Lino?
I have no objections.
Okay. I'll make a motion unless you want to make a motion, Mr. Lino.
Oh, sure, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion behalf of the owner, Aaron Batello, address 35 Mead Street, Sheet 137A, Lot 49, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach four feet into the 10-foot required right yard setback to construct an attached garage addition. This is in the RA zone. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property to expand, expand the garage, given the special conditions of the property, the layout of the property, and the spacing of the houses, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method that's reasonable. We believe that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect the property values and surrounding parcels. We certainly have no evidence one way or the other on that. We don't believe it's contrary to the public interest, and we believe substantial justice to the applicant would be served, so I make a motion to approve this variance request.
Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? It's three to nothing. Congratulations. Nobody here, you followed along, there's a third-day window of appeal, but good luck.
Awesome. Thank you, Tom.
Okay. All right. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case, case number, case number five. It's case number six, and we'll give Mr. Shaw a few minutes to catch up. All set? Okay, so we're down to the rehearing request now? All right, so I'm going to open the public meeting for rehearing request from a five, May 22, 2018, public hearing. Is the Roman Catholic Bishop of Manchester, owner of St. Joseph's, the work of parish applicant, 777 West Hollis Street, Sheet D, Lot 76, requesting the following variances: one, from land use code Section 190-101, Table 101-7, to permit an electronic message center sign in the R9 zone; two, from land use code Section 190-97, subsection B, to allow graphics on the proposed electronic message center sign, where only three lines of text are permitted; three, from land use code Section 190-102, to exceed maximum ground identification sign area, 12 square, 12 square feet permitted, 45.5 square feet proposed; and four, to exceed maximum height of ground identification sign, eight feet permitted, 13 and a half feet proposed, it's in the R9 zone, Ward 5. Note that the zoning board approved variances number three and number four, and did not support number one and number two. Ready to begin? Okay. So we're just, so there are four questions that we need to answer, and we'll start with the first question, unless you, anybody else has any other ideas? Okay, so we'll start. So for the rehearing request, question number one, was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice denying somebody the right to be heard, et cetera.
Say no?
No.
No, that's three noes. Question number two, was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception and/or variance?
No, I think we thoroughly actually discussed this case and reflected on all the aspects of the points of law.
No.
And it's a no for myself, too, so that's three noes. Question number three, does the request for a rehearing containing any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing?
Not that I can tell.
No, I, I think that it's just really kind of restatement of what we heard in the original application and testimony. I didn't see, I think there might have been just a little bit in terms of the, kind of what they were willing to agree to stipulation-wise, but even that, I didn't take to be of any real substance, or...
So it was really a black and white, kind of maybe mimicking of that board, it's what they're saying, and no color. I was on the opposite side, so I really don't have anything to say about this. You know, it's really more of...
I, it's just my, well, my general feeling is that somebody needs to go into their Alderman and get this, this EMC issue reconsidered by the Board of Aldermen, so, because we can't just keep trying to make rules.
Okay, and, and...
But, but I don't think it contained any new information.
All right, so, so no for you, Mr. Shaw?
That's a no for me.
That's a no for Mr. Lino. No for me, but for a different reason. Okay, so the reason is, is that I was the dissenting vote on the refusal, so of that...
But I think the question, the question still is basically, is there new information not presented, not, not, so that's, I think, all that's being asked, not the last question about maybe making a diff...
Okay, that's right. I'm sorry, you're right. Right, so just a no.
Okay.
Okay. So three noes. Is there anything which would, could cause the board to make a different decision?
I say no, because there really hasn't been any new information presented, and I think, again, we covered, covered this thoroughly, so I don't believe that there, we have anything new that would lead the board to make a different decision.
And the same for me. I didn't see anything that would, would make me want to consider a different decision.
All right, and no for me, I wouldn't, there's nothing here that would make me consider a different decision. So three noes. Okay, so, so the motion, so, let me know if you're ready, I'll make a motion.
Yep.
All right, so I'll make a motion to deny the rehearing request per our discussions on each of the four questions that we discussed briefly here, the questions on the rehearing request. Seconded by Mr. Lino. Any discussion? Okay, so all in favor of denying the rehearing request? That's three to nothing. All right, so I'll close the public meeting on the rehearing requests.
Maybe ask these folks who just came in what they're here for?
Okay, so, 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 yeah, and we follow a very specific criteria of questions, so you heard some of that. So again, now it'll be, the, the next step would be whatever, you know, would be, any action would be taken by the applicant.
They would have to go to court.
They would have to go to a separate court, so...
Superior.
Superior court.
It's done with the city, so...
Right, yeah, so, okay. All right. You're welcome. All right, so you have some meeting minutes?
Two sets, an old set from May 8, and a set from the last meeting.
Well, let Mr. Shaw catch up.
I'm, I'm good.
All right, so the May 8 meeting, did anybody see anything, any concerns?
I did not.
Okay.
No.
So they can make a motion to approve the May 8, 2018, meeting minutes for the zoning board?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lino, all in favor? That's three to nothing. All right, and then we have the June 12 meeting minutes. Is there anything that anybody's seen or has any questions or concerns with?
I wasn't here for this meeting, can, is it, should I vote on this? And if I don't, what happens?
I mean, the minutes can just be considered at the next meeting if there's more people in attendance.
Which, I think...
I mean, there's never been, there's not enough, we don't have a requirement in our bylaws, and there is no requirement that the members of the ZBA have to have been present to approve the minutes of any given meeting. The idea is mostly that it's, is we have to take the formal action to approve minutes so that they are part of the record, but it's, you know...
And I believe at any time, if somebody saw something, an issue with it, they could bring it up, right?
Right.
So it's not like it's, it's not like set in stone, meaning to say it can't be revised if somebody found something, right?
Yeah, okay, fine.
Just to make sure that, you know, the description in there is like, that someone did make a motion, someone did second it, what the vote was, you know, the, the ads in there are correct, just, just kind of like an orderly written description of the meeting, so. Could be typos, could be cut-and-paste errors every once in a while. Awfully rare. There is something like that, but...
So, Mr. Lino, I, I don't think we can compel you to vote, so if you are not in the position or want to vote, that's okay? And then we'll just, we'll just put it off for the next meeting. It's really...
I'll vote, that's fine.
I'm not even sure that we couldn't approve on a two-to-one vote, because I, actually, I mean, a two-zero, two-zero vote with an abstention, but...
They're not really appealable by anybody, you know?
Yeah, so it doesn't...
It doesn't matter. I'll, I'll vote. That's okay.
All right.
Just asking, making sure I understand the process.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the June 12, 2018 ZBA minutes, seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Three to nothing. Okay.
Should be in general for the next case, next meeting?
So regional impact, this is not far enough... So regional impact, this is not far enough up West Hollis Street to impact Hollis, right?
No, it's, it's pretty far south down there, but it's not, it doesn't abut Hollis or anything.
Right, and then this is...
The other one is on...
This is my neighborhood here, and then Woodcrest is in...
Near the exit five.
Yeah, so, does anybody see any regional impact? I don't think so.
No.
All right, so no regional impact.
Any known absences for the next meeting?
Not for me.
Okay, so all set. Does anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Shaw?
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Yeah, all in favor? Okay, we're adjourned at 8:40.